Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the review of the update of our comprehensive plan. I am calling this meeting officially to order. The time is 2:06 PM and today is Wednesday, November 13, 2019. And before we go any further, I'm going to ask Pat Braden, who is our civil deputy prosecuting attorney, to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I'll just poll quickly for any potential conflicts of interest. Leslie, you're okay? Okay, none. And so I'll just make a couple of brief comments before we move on and then I'll turn it over to our deputy, not deputy, excuse me, Director David Callahan. And by the way, the folks seating to your left, the first individual, is our communications manager. This is Nancy Jones. And Nancy is, this is our first effort to videotape a meeting in this room. So the cameras are set up. They'll be able to pick you up individually and pan. We have much greater capability than we do in our conference room upstairs. So thank you all for attending. Of course, next to Nancy is David Callahan, the Director of Community Development. And I already mentioned Pat Braden, Deputy Civil Prosecuting Attorney, who helps us prevent from tripping over our faces. So, in any case, just a couple of quick points before we moved on the meeting. This hearing was noticed for 2:00 PM. And what we've done for the first time is actually decided to continue the meeting again at 6:00 PM for those folks that can't make afternoons. Historically, and if you look at most of the communities in this country, these meetings do tend to occur in the afternoon. What we've done essentially is spoil ourselves because we've been hosting most of our public hearings in the evenings. So this time, we're actually doing both. So for those folks that can't or won't drive or for whatever reason are unable to attend at 6:00, you're here now. And other folks who can't attend at 2:00 can attend this evening at 6:00. So what happens is, this is your time. This is public testimony. This is where we gather what you have to say. Of course, we have the written comments that are on our laptops that we get a chance to read. So when folks say, "Well, can I have any more time?" The answer is, yeah, you can have all the time you want. Just write it in. If you want to write eight or 10 pages, have at it. But what we'll do today and what we'll do this evening is, or at least for now, is hold a testimony to five minutes. Typically, we go three, but we're going to go five because we don't have that many folks present. And so, without further ado, we'll move on. We'll gather your testimony. If we don't respond to you, please don't take that as an offense. This is your time and this is for us to hear what you have to say. At the conclusion of the two meetings, we enter into deliberations. And that's a time where simply the three commissioners deliberate and decide what to do, what to change, to accept it, to reject it, however we deem to be the appropriate course of action. Now, that could happen this evening or it could happen later. We don't necessarily have to deliberate today. We tend to make that decision at the end of the day depending on the level of information and the complexity of the subject. So without any further delay, we'll move on. Oh, David Callahan, you go first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm David Callahan, Cootney County Community Development Director. I would just like to mention a few quick things before you open things up to a public hearing. This item has been properly noticed 28 days before today's hearing, so it is properly before you today. In your electronic packet, you read an email from me that outlines a few things I'll go over briefly in just a moment. But you also have the Plan Commission's final deliberations and strike through of what they did on September 26 in their public hearing. And you have their complete version in your packet of what they're recommending to you. And that has been in the last two days, the subject of some considerable emails back and forth. And so I'd like to drill down on that. The, what's been on our Keeping Cootney webpage and what is the Plan Commission's recommendation is an update to our comprehensive plan. We have said, since we started work on this in April of this year, in five public meetings attended by our Plan Commission and staff, we've regularly stated that this update for goals, objectives, and policies will supplant or replace, if you will, the goals, objectives, and policies in our currently adopted comprehensive plan. But that's as far as it goes. It does not replace the other existing text or the maps or the data. So this easy starting point for today is just remember, this is our current policy. If the county commissioners adopt some version of what the Plan Commission recommends, this will roll into this to the extent that's rational and practical, meaning it'll strike out things that no longer make sense and that the Plan Commission recommended striking out. It'll replace where the Plan Commission has new policy. But all of the data, all of the text, all of the maps remain as your adopted comprehensive plan. I hope that's as clear as necessary, but I'm here for any questions you have. And then just one other quick thing, or a couple of the quick things. The memo from me explains the background of why we're doing this, process, how we got to where we are today. I won't go into any of that for the sake of brevity unless you have questions of me. But I do want to just mention that in an effort such as this, which has been some considerable time with our planning commission, and because it has changed every time the planning commission has reviewed new data and argued and discussed and dialogued, when that sort of regular incremental change occurs, it's, in my experience, impossible to have a letter-perfect document before you today. And so that's why you read in my recommendation to you that I would appreciate, in whatever motion you may make to approve this, to give the staff discretion to dot the i's and correct grammar for things that are inconsequential so that we don't need to come back to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
That really is what I wanted to cover. But again, Pat and I are here if you have any questions.
Okay. Pat, did you care to say anything? Perhaps regarding the notice, anything?
I just concur with Mr. Callahan that I looked at the notice, the affidavit publication in the press, and it was published exactly 28 days before today's date. Also, just reiterate that the Planning Commission recommendation on the Keeping Cootney website was very explicit as to what this update is and what it is not, as of right now. You know, I certainly share, you know, concerns that have been raised about the verbocity and the length of the, of what, of the text, not the goals and policies themselves. I'm perfectly fine with all of those as they're recommended by the planning commission. But just, you know, the stuff that hasn't been the subject of this update, you know, I certainly look forward to the planning commission's further efforts to shorten that, you know, align it to what, you know, the county's, you know, goals in terms of land use planning and zoning should be. But that wasn't within the scope of this particular effort. So it is ongoing and I think those other concerns will be addressed down the road. And I think the way the planning commission, you know, approached the goals and policies, you know, if they do the same thing with the rest of the line, which I think we will have a much better comprehensive plan than even we would, you know, coming out of this effort.
Okay, thank you. Leslie, would you like to share some thoughts?
No, I'm just looking forward to hearing your testimony today.
And before we begin, I would like to recognize and acknowledge the presence of two of our legislators, Tony Visnevsky. Tony, would you raise your hand, please? And Ron Mendive. And welcome, gentlemen. It's a pleasure to have you here. Thank you for joining us. Okay, then. So let's move on to the first individual. And that would be, is it Kaj Matheson from the Coeur d'Alene Tribe?
Yes.
Welcome, sir. Name and address, please.
Kaj Matheson, post office box 408, Plummer, Idaho, 83851.
Take it away.
Okay. Ah, he's squeezed. So my name is Kaj Matheson. I'm the Director of Natural Resources for the Coeur d'Alene Tribe. I'm also a member of the Turtle Clan of the Coeur d'Alene People. And I'm here to submit comments on behalf of the Coeur d'Alene Tribe. I, first of all, want to say to the commissioners, thank you guys for engaging in this important public process. I know as a government employee myself that sometimes these things can be challenging and sometimes these jobs that we have sometimes can often be thankless. And so I want, above all things, to be able to hope that I demonstrate a level of respect to you all for the service that you provide to your county and your constituents. So we're especially happy that this public process allows for comments from affected governments like the Coeur d'Alene Tribe. As you all know, the Coeur d'Alene Tribe has been here since time immemorial. And during that time, we've got it down-packed when it comes to being able to manage our landscape and our natural resources in a way that's sustainable and fruitful for everybody, built upon thousands and thousands of years of experience and knowledge. And it's something that we pride ourselves in. And as we develop and we've grown over the past couple of centuries, we've been able to translate that knowledge and combine it effectively with important science and the way that science speaks to the way that things ought to be. With that, we want to identify that the Cootney County's comprehensive plan, the land use and development code as implemented, affects the health and welfare and political integrity of the Coeur d'Alene Tribe, both within the tribe's Aboriginal territory and the Coeur d'Alene Reservation. With that, we have five recommendations that we would like to propose to you guys. We did submit our recommendation to David Callahan via email, and I have a hard copy here I'd like to submit as well, but I'll go ahead and just talk about them. In fact, I'm going to summarize them verbally to you guys.
Appreciate it.
The actual comments are different, but, but comment number one has to do ultimately with this, the process that has taken place. Again, I want to be respectful of your guys' process and the way that things are occurring. But we recognize that the Idaho Code, the Local Land Use and Planning Act dictates that in a plan, a Cootney County plan such as this, shall consider previous and existing conditions, trends, compatibility of land uses, desirable goals and objectives, or desirable future situations for each planning component. The plan with maps, charts, and reports shall be based on the components as they may apply to land use regulations and actions unless the plan specifies reasons why a particular component is unneeded. And essentially, what we're saying with this is that by only updating the goals, objectives, and policies of the 2010 plan, you are effectively separating those two things and, in our opinion, falling out of compliance with the Land, Local Land Use Planning Act. So our recommendation is that, in order to be compliant, that the final adoption of the proposed plan be deferred until all required planned elements are updated and presented as a complete plan for the commission to review and approve. Our second comment has to do with clarity. I know that there were some comments just made right before this about maybe the unclarity that existed regarding what exactly was being updated and what wasn't being updated. In our previous comments, the tribe acknowledged that we also had that unclarity, too. We were able to get from some of the planning staff a redlined version, but that's a version that we were able just to obtain just recently. And because of that, we recognize that the entire community might still continue to have that lack of clarity, despite the fact that it is for sure being stated very clear now what the attention, our attentions were. We don't believe that that's always been the case. So our recommendation is that you guys upload the current redlined version onto the Keeping Cootney and Cootney County websites for at least one month prior to making any decision of approving the plan. Comment number three, in your guys' objective one, general, this reads, "To recognize the primacy of owners' rights to use and control their properties in all regulations and policies and justify any limitations on these rights. We believe that the word 'primacy of' can lead and create significant legal difficulties for the county in any efforts to place reasonable regulations on private property by opening any such effort to determination of whether it conflicts with the primacy of use by land owners. Our feelings are that Idaho law already adequately contains protections for private property rights and that the inclusion of that language is going to create problems for the county." In edits to objective one, zoning, on pages one through three, it currently reads, "Balance property rights with the responsibility to protect, to protect public health, safety, and general welfare through zoning." We would like it to read, and we request that it read, "Balance property rights with the responsibility to protect natural resources and public waterways while also protecting public health, safety, and general welfare through zoning." And finally, in our fifth comment, we really just want to recommend that you guys add an additional goal or objective and/or policy that really encourages the county and tribe to work together on land use planning and zoning, really now and into the future. As you guys know, Cootney County overlaps with where the reservation currently is and it can create some challenging problems moving forward. And so we want to, we want to be able to create an environment where we're really getting along and preemptively dealing with challenging issues before they arise. So if you guys were able to include some type of a goal like that, we think we can create an atmosphere under which we're, our staffs are encouraged to work together ahead of time and make sure that any problems are avoided.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you very much. Okay.
Do you want to submit your comments? Yes. B-1000.
Okay, so Carla Womner. Carla, did you want us to read this into the record or did you just want it submitted? Just submitted, okay. So we have another exhibit. Yeah, it is part of the record. But we can read it in if you'd like. Would you like that? Do you want to read it? So Commissioner Leslie Duncan will read the comments into the record.
Dear Commissioners Philios Duncan and Brooks, first, I would like to applaud the work and diligence of the planning commission throughout this process. While I do understand the comprehensive plan is a guiding document, I have some concerns. Number one, property rights. I was pleased to see that it was moved to the number one objective in this plan. It appeared to me to be a bit of an afterthought by its placement in the 2010 plan. My primary concern is the protection of property rights. To quote a friend, "The job of the B.O.C.C. and P.C. should be to protect property rights, not control them." I further feel that it is of utmost importance to leave the word "primacy" in the document. Primacy indicates the importance of property rights. It does not take away from any other property rights concerning health, safety, or welfare if a neighboring property owner, of a neighboring property owner. I would respectfully request you approve the updated comp plan as presented. I submit these thoughts most respectfully, Carla.
Thank you very much. Martha Cook, floor is yours. I got your name, give us your address.
2503 West Presley, Coeur d'Alene, Idaho, 83814. On page eight of the, this revision, this update, I appreciate, under proposed land use objective 7A, I appreciate seeing number eight, requiring development of a certain scale to estimate all groundwater and surface water needs, to deter, et cetera, et cetera, to determine if sufficient water will support the new development without negatively impacting surrounding land use owners and their hydrologic system. And then on page 10, under proposed objective number three, again, inventory where land use development does negatively affect water quality or quantity and use this information to determine other possible affected areas. It's very important to me. And then on page number 14, under community design, on the right side of the page, proposed goal, community design, I appreciate this, establish a policy for allowing subarea planning within the county. I spoke to you all about a month ago about the problems Pleasant View community is having with groundwater in a fragmented rock situation. And I reminded the Board of County Commissioners that what you oversee in the county is a huge percentage of land, I believe, that is served by underwater fragmented rock water bodies, water areas that are immeasurable and indeterminate and not necessarily going to be there forever. I think that "got water" will be our theme going forward, especially with this development increase going on currently. I want you to be very aware in this plan and going forward that a subarea yelling for help, knowing that their wells are failing, that their springs are failing, that more and more wells are being plugged into an area that is an isolated area and, of course, not over the aquifer, it's very critical that you're aware of the water shortages in our county. Thank you.
Thank you, Martha. Okay, Diana Johns.
Diana Johns, 2248 West Rosebud Lane, Coeur d'Alene, Idaho, 83814.
Go right ahead.
Thank you. I share, live in the same area and actually share the concerns of Martha. We've had a number of well failures and the situation with Pleasant View is...
Can you try to speak into the mics a bit?
Sorry.
There you go.
There we go.
Okay, thank you.
I share Martha's concerns, living in the same area at Micah Flats, and also with the people at Pleasant View. We've had some people we hear who've had to put in some cisterns and may need to look forward at some point to just putting a halt to new well drilling until it can be established that there's some way that the existing people can continue to get their water without suddenly having to pay, having water hauled from town. I also agree and appreciate the comments by the gentleman from the Coeur d'Alene Tribe. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Moore. Go right ahead, sir. Name, we got your name and address?
Michael Moore, address 6562 West Harbor Drive, Coeur d'Alene, subcode 83814. I'd like to begin with applauding the commissioners and the committee here for what looks for some loosening of some elements of the text. So I see statements to effect that with regard to areas of impact, city impact, number six, the use of the term voluntary open space, historical sites, and agricultural practices within ACIs. And also here in this, the planning commission revisions to the comprehensive plan, objective four and 7A eliminate references to the view sheds. And also, objective four, policy two, subdivision development, rural areas should be voluntary in the preserve of open space. Again, I think voluntary is the key word here, the ultimate necessity for any undertaking of the county, Cootney County, or any other governmental entity. Because as a democratic republic, the voluntary goodwill and free will of the individuals are what all policy hinges upon. And I say this, having had the opportunity as a young man at the age of 20 to go in the spring of 1984 behind the Iron Curtain, traveling from Vienna, Austria, when I was in school, into Poland. And let me just say that the experience of visiting Poland, a communist country in the Soviet Bloc at the age of 20 was like stepping back in time by 50 years to see horse-drawn plows, see lines in front of bakeries and butcher shops. Why is this germane to the discussion at hand? Because ultimately, when attempts are made by governmental entities to have command and control economies in which every facet of planning is nailed down to the nth degree, there is no longer any room for voluntary participation on a part of the citizenry. And it's voluntary participation, as I say, which is the most pivotal to the successful implementation of any plan or any government goals to be enacted for the sake of the common good. So I would caution the committee and the commissioners with regard to whatever this complexity of the previous plan from 2010 and where we find ourselves right in this moment, to please err on the side of great caution and latitude in allowing some variables that they don't have to be defined to the utmost degree. And with that, you will achieve the goodwill of the citizenry and they will have, you will have their support in what you're undertaking. Because to plan everything ultimately thoroughly to A through Z is simply not possible and will have, enact the principle of double effect, unintended consequences. Thank you for your time this afternoon.
Thank you, Michael. Welcome.
Hi. I would just like to...
Yeah, your address, please.
Oh, yes. P.O. Box 1053, Athel, Idaho, 83801. I would like to say that I would like to second the concern of the tribe. They had number two where they were concerned that it wasn't taken in the context of the entire document, and that is also my concern. So I will not repeat everything that the gentleman said. I also fully agree with exactly what Mr. Moore just said, so you can put me on record for that as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Robert White.
Robert White, P.O. Box 1053, Athel, Idaho, 83801. Thank you, Commissioners, for hearing us today. This has been a really long, tiring process. And one of the concerns I really have is, I hope we get to speak when it comes down to the final revision where the old meets the new and the final words are actually put down so we can speak actually to what there is. Because the old plan, if you remember from the beginning, really caused an uproar in this community. And I would hate to see that again. I'm really in favor of a lot of the revision that we have done. But when I read the old plan, I do see a lot of contradictions and stuff against property rights. I'm hoping that we can speak when it comes down to the final plan and have an opportunity to that. I would like to say something else, too. I know that this was put in the Coeur d'Alene paper, but I would also like to see it put on the county website when these meetings are being held. Could not all of us get the Coeur d'Alene paper? And I just want to say, everybody that's spoken before me, I agree with them, too. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. How are you?
Mr. Chairman, just a note on the public hearing. It was placed on the county website. In fact, it's on the front page of the website. You have to scroll down a little bit, but it is there.
Thank you, Pat. It's been on Facebook. We try to go the extra mile to promote these meetings, believe me, but thank you, Pat. Go right ahead.
Thank you for this opportunity for us to speak today. My name is Josephine Dean Jackson. I'm at 2946 East Murphy Road, Coeur d'Alene, 83814. I'm not up to date as much on this as I would like to be, but I want to -- is this Mr. Moore here? I want to concur with him. As you can tell, I am not from these parts. I have great experience in socialist countries, and I'm deeply concerned about this proposal right from its emanating from the U.N., so I have a concern about its legitimacy even being in our midst here. I think our own Commissioners and our own governments are more than apt to create our own policies and our own government direction. I'm critically concerned about property rights. Without property rights, we don't have individual rights. And I'm very concerned about the incredibly subjective aspects to the conflict of ensuring public health, safety, and general welfare in means and ways to erode private property and individual rights. So I would like to ask that, that I also have time to write and submit that, and also to thank you again. And what else is there? It's just, it hinges on private property and individual rights, and that's why many of us are here, and this is why this country is absolutely unique and remarkable in time and history. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom Torgerson, 4808 East Vernon Hill Road, Coeur d'Alene, Idaho, 83814. I would say just a couple things. First, David Callahan and Pat Braden and you Commissioners, I think you guys are doing a great job. And while David and my opinions of how growth might be portrayed or thought of would be differing, I've never found a man who is more helpful in getting you through the process. So that's a very respectful position that he takes in his duties here, that he works for you. And Pat is obviously a very intelligent man. So what I'd say is, I'm hardcore all about total and absolute private property rights. So if you guys can figure out a way to legislate or regulate common sense, we wouldn't have to have any of these laws, but good luck doing that. So that's why we have to have these codes. The only thing I would say, and I think David and I have talked about this, and I'm fairly confident, and I don't want to use the wrong number of pages, but I think in his prior job, they got the comp plan down to 20-some pages or 30-some pages, and I know it's been cut down significantly, but it's supposed to be a big, broad-based thing, and I think what we all are going to end up diving down for is zoning and that aspect. So what I'd say is, staff is on the right track. They're getting there, of course. I tremendously support private property rights, but we do need to regulate because people will take advantage of no code. The east side of the lake, in my opinion, is brutally over-restricted with agricultural zoning, which doesn't occur and does not create revenue for those people with regards to the amount of their land. I think this is being proven with regards to the changes in the ACI Hutter area, pardon me, Hauser area, that's being redone, which has been incredibly over-restrictive. I don't think it's fair to the people on the east side of the lake to be so restricted. That might need to be considered in the comp plan. I'm not sure how we're going to do that. I think the county is also, and of course, we have to work with Panhandle Health District on this, but with regards to commercial and industrial areas in the county that are unincorporated, and also, and not for the thing that people might think of increased density, but in fact, in light of the people who might want to have a five-acre piece and have family have two homes, and I know we can't do it on the Prairie, again, or on the Aquifer because of the Health District, but we have no type of zoning that allows for any of that, even if you're on a 20-acre piece unless you go through, you know, through a subdivision, and there's ways to deal with that with single ownership or what have you. But I think you guys are on the right track. I respect your work, and I'll be definitely piling in when we get into the zoning aspect of this, but thank you for your hard work. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Tom. Tom, I think you're referring to accessory dwelling units?
Well, that's different.
Okay.
I mean, you've got all the limitations and stuff, but yes, and I'd be happy to talk with you anytime.
Okay.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you. You bet. And let's see, Kenny Moore. He was here.
I think he's coming back at 6:00.
He's coming back at 6:00.
Yeah, he had an appointment.
Okay.
Okay.
Does anyone else wish to speak? Now's your time to speak up. No?
I have a question for David. Can we receive written comments after today's hearing and consider those?
You can receive comments up until the point you make a decision. This is a legislative matter.
Great.
As opposed to quasi-judicial?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right. So Ms. Josephine, if you have written comments you want to submit...
Get them in. You got it.
Get them in.
Okay. If there are no further comments, I'll say again, as I said earlier, we're going to continue this this evening at 6:00 P.M. for folks who want to attend and want to opine. And so, without any further delay, it is now 2:43, and this meeting is adjourned, and I thank you...
Not adjourned, just...
Oh, I'm sorry. It's continued. Thank you, Leslie.
Reciced.
Reciced. Sorry about that.
Until 6:00 o'clock.
See, I'm a creature of habit. I usually wind up adjourning meetings. Okay. Thank you again. Everyone, thank you for attending. This is, we are going to be taking up the update to the Comprehensive Plan, which was written back in 2010. We did have a meeting earlier today at 2:00 P.M., so this is actually a continuation of that meeting. So this way, folks have had sort of a dual opportunity, whether to attend in the afternoon or the evening, and this is the first time we've done it this way. So hopefully, we've managed to accommodate everyone. So attending are Commissioners Duncan and Filios. Commissioner Brooks is on medical leave. And so, without further delay, I will ask Director David Callahan if he has any comments that he'd like to make.
Thank you, Commissioners. I think for the current audience's sake, I should repeat myself from 2:00 this afternoon. First of all, my apologies to anyone that was confused about how this document and this document go together. It has been the Plan Commission's message, the staff message on the Internet since April of this year. We've done what we can to make it clear that this language updates the goals, objectives, and policies and would replace them if adopted, of the goals, objectives, and policies in here. But it does not take away the existing data, existing maps, or any of the other old language that's in this document. So since this is the county's currently adopted comprehensive plan, this update is a first of a series of steps that the Plan Commission wants to conduct. The other quick things I should say is that the Commissioners have a message from me in the way of a memo that provides background process, explanation of the public participation that's gone into this, and the Planning Commission's hearing, they also have the literal strike-through and write-out and underline, I mean, that the Plan Commission did the night of their hearing, and they have it in a different format, just easier to understand. And the Commissioners also have Pat Braden, my legal counsel's full strike-out and redline of this document, so that they understand that, again, that these goals, objectives, policies would supplant those that are in our current comprehensive plan if, at some point in the future, you choose to approve them. I did also at 2:00 mention that if Commissioners go so far as to approve this update, we would like their authority to make minor grammatical and syntactical changes, because in any sort of document like this, they inevitably arise after we've adopted something. I've been over this countless times. I have found a few. I'll just read one quick example into the record, the sort of thing we would like to be able to change. On page 10, under Proposed Objective Three, Policy One, it currently reads, "Inventory where land use development does negatively affect water quality," so on. Makes better grammatical sense, in my view, to say, "Inventory where land use development negatively affects water quality." Strike the "does." That's the sort of thing we would like authority to do.
Okay.
If you have any questions about anything like that, Pat and I are here for you, and of course, for any of the background. But that really covers, I believe, everything I went over at 2:00, unless you think I've missed something. Thank you.
I think we're fine. Okay. So just to introduce some of the players here, immediately to your left is Nancy Jones. She's our Communications Manager, and she's handling, this is the first attempt to videotape in this environment, and so we do have cameras. The cameras are capable of panning, so hopefully, it'll provide some decent entertainment for folks. Of course, you just heard from David Callahan, Director of Community Development, and Pat Braden, Deputy Civil Prosecuting Attorney, who hopefully keeps us out of trouble. What we did this afternoon, we allowed people, customarily, we go three minutes, so we allowed for five, and we'll do the same this evening. If you overrun a little bit, it's not a big deal, because we don't have a very big crowd. We had about 20 to 25 people present this afternoon. So what we'll do is, you will be timed when the yellow light goes on. That's a 30-second warning, if you will. And so Kathy Ford will be monitoring your time. So we do have some folks that signed in this afternoon that presumably, we're going to be here this evening. I don't see them, or at least I don't see at least one of them, and that's Kenny Moore. I'll call him out first. 31048 East Hayden Lake Road, Hayden, Idaho, 83835. He is not present. He did ask a question, which I think Director Callahan just answered, which is, was the purpose of the Commissioners to join the old comp plan with the new comp plan or to replace the whole comp plan? And I think you answered that by indicating it is an update. Okay. And then we have Ms. Audra Holm, not present, I take it? Okay. And her comment is, "I oppose the plan as it is presented to the public." And also, having submitted this this afternoon, Debbie Toll. I presume Debbie's not present. 4089 Pleasant Lane, Post Falls, Idaho. "Please slow down the growth. We are losing our rural areas." Okay. So we'll move on to folks that have, I guess, come this evening. Daniel Owsley? Yes, sir. You're welcome to speak. Your address, please.
37593 East Hayden Lake Road, in Hayden, Idaho.
Go right ahead.
I, first off, I wanted to say thank you for the work on this. It's really well done. I got to see this, I believe, one of the meetings in the summer, and it's, like I said, it's really well done. It's condensing down a lot of complexities. In my job, I have to deal with very complex regulations on a regular basis, and, believe me, I have seen the absolute nightmare that complex and badly-written regulations can create. A couple of comments. The School District section, Policies Two and Three refers to 50 or more units to coordinate. Developers need to coordinate with the schools. Would this regulation allow for, for example, the county to offer incentives to developers to set aside land for schools? Is that something that would be possible with this sort of regulation, or is it just ensuring, you know, encouraging coordination?
Director Callahan?
Opine first, and then our legal counsel jump in. But no, this doesn't get to a requirement of any sort. And if I may, just to just, this is a comprehensive plan update as a guide. We aren't dealing with regulations at this point.
Sure. I'm just wondering if the county chose to say, yes, for this particular development, we want to offer some sort of incentives, would this type of policy goal allow the county to do something like that?
It could lead to regulations that do just that.
Okay.
But of course, those would have to be proposed, vetted, and adopted through the ordinance adoption process. This would just be a policy that could, you know, start that ball rolling if desired.
And let me just interrupt here, if I may. This is your time. This is your time to speak. We're basically here to listen and take notes, but go right ahead.
The other area that really stood out to me, the land use policy number two, and it's referring to rural character and developments that are 50 or more units are required to work to maintain that rural character. I think that strikes a really good balance. May consider lowering that number, but I think 50 is a really good number. But overall, I really wanted to compliment you guys on all of the work that's been done on this.
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thank you for coming. Brent. Brent Regan. All we need's your address. Got your name.
6100 East Borley Road. First, I wanted to thank you for extending the meeting in the evening so that those of us with jobs can come and attend. I know it's an imposition on you, but it's appreciated. The Comprehensive Plan is a strategic plan for the county, and so it's best if it's as short and brief and concise as possible so that it doesn't lead us astray into other areas. The 2010 plan had a bunch of filler and fluff and information and data that Kuzia Watkins had stuffed into there, and it inflated it up to some 200 pages. I think this exercise proves that what the essence of the strategic plan is this nice little 16-page document. And I read it back in April and thought, hallelujah, this is wonderful. It's been simplified. A lot of the requirements have been brought back to a reasonable level, and while it's not a perfect document, I think it was a great improvement over what was there before. You know, no human endeavor is perfect. over what was there before. You know, no human endeavor is perfect. Even the Constitution has 10 revisions and the first 10 amendments, so were required for it to pass. So I'm happy to make incremental steps towards a better document. I don't really have anything specific that I can say tonight, because we learned that the document, and David Callahan has been great in helping me understand this. This document is now going to get merged into the other plan, and so that has to be considered in its totality. And I haven't done that yet, frankly. I haven't had time to do it. But I have a modest suggestion for you, and that, since this really is the essence of it, keep this as the comprehensive plan, and add the filler and information and data as an addendum. Okay? So that that now is a separate component, and when we want to talk about revising it, we only got to look at 16 pages, not 216. And that, you know, the more there is, the more inertia there is, and the more difficult it is to go and pick the darn thing up and read through it. So my mumble advice to you this evening is, you've got this already separated out. Keep it that way. Add the rest of the 2010 as an addendum, and then you'll be able to boast that we've reduced the comprehensive plan to 200, from 200 pages to 16. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Scott Howard?
The address that I own, that's county, is 4340 West Perrywinkle Lane. But I also live in the city of Post Falls, at 2855 North Sandtrap Way.
So which one would you like us to use?
We'll use Sandtrap Way. That's what I wrote on the paper.
Okay.
So.
Okay. Go right ahead.
Hi, Howard. Again, thank you for having this at a time that people who work during the day can attend. I do want to say I am deeply concerned with the direction that County is going with this comprehensive plan update. According to the Idaho Code, the first thing that any plan must do, and I'll quote, "is ensure that land use policies, restrictions, conditions, and fees do not violate private property rights, adversely impact property values, or create unnecessary technical limitations on the use of the property." This update actually does just that. The 2010 comprehensive plan clearly denotes that they are protecting private property rights, and it's paramount by stating, even in the goals, protect private property rights while implementing overall policies to ensure the public's well-being. And again, protect private property rights or property rights and the orderly process of government by ensuring land development permit decisions are reviewed and decided in a timely and predictable manner. That's in the current 2010 comprehensive plan. However, this update clearly devalues these rights. It implies that the government itself has rights over property owners. By changing the language of the goals, and I'll quote, "to adopt land use regulations and zoning that protect property rights while ensuring the public health, safety, general welfare, and natural resource protection needs are met," this puts regulation and zoning in a higher priority than property rights. The update continues with, "recognize the primacy of owners' rights to use and control their properties in all regulations and policies, and justify any limitations on these rights." This continues to devalue our rights as something to consider, or something that can be limited. The very first proposed policy in this plan shows contempt for property rights held by the Planning Board here, by stating, "we should determine the public outlook of property rights." This is not a social issue. This is a right. This right is protected by the Constitution of the United States, as well as the state of Idaho. Public outlook is irrelevant. Property owners should be free to use their property as they see fit. This comprehensive plan does not provide that. I want to go on to say that the remainder of the plan, I was barely able to get through because of the glaringness of the property rights violations in that. And so therefore, I see the whole plan does not meet the needs, and nor the code of Idaho. Thank you.
Okay.
One question for you.
Yes.
Do you figure in the next maybe three weeks or so that you could go through it and give us a written statement?
Yes.
That would be great. I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. Summer Bushnell?
I have a couple of questions. Oh, I just gave my address, don't I?
Yes, you do.
6 East Portside Court, Post Falls. So this is the 16-page thing that we all agree on, right? That we liked, right? And this is the one I was emailing you guys about earlier. This is the cover to the 200-page monstrosity that Northwest Property Owners was founded to get rid of. Now, this is my question before I talk a little more. So from the emails that we've been going back and forth on, I'm understanding you want to take the 16-page one and put it into the 200-page monstrosity. Is that correct, or am I still misunderstanding from the emails?
That's correct, but there is a bunch of strike-through, so.
Yes, and I saw the strike-through, and it reduces it by like, what, I was guessing like 25 pages, which I was like, that's a start, but it's still a monstrosity of a document.
Right.
Because I went back, I recorded the AFL community meeting, and if you listened to the first couple of minutes, I sent that to you guys on YouTube, and like, I wasn't sure if you had time before the 2:00 meeting or later. And I forget the guy's name that was the head of planning and zoning? I don't remember his.
Before David?
No.
You mean David Levine?
Oh, David Levine, I'm sorry.
I was like, not that David, the other one. Because he said, "We are here to your comments on the comprehensive plan." This is my, not word-for-word, but this comprehensive plan links to the land use code. This is not the land use code. And he holds up this, but he said, "This is the comprehensive plan." And so to me, I think that may be where a lot of us are getting misunderstanding, because me and other people were like, great, this is the only comprehensive plan. It's only 16 pages long. Then I completely agree with Brent. Stay with just this. This is marvelous. We've agreed on it. We've hashed it over. We've had tons of public comments since like, what, April or May? But then this one came back up. This has, and I think I sent you guys at first a more detailed email, this one still has wildlife corridors, view sheds. It has unified land use code that Northwest Property Owners and I have fought against. It talks about the community designs and the village-based stuff that was fought against, where they'd say, oh, if you have 10 acres, you can only do this type of housing. You can't subdivide below that. So my point today was, and I was accused in email of attacking Mr. Callahan, I just feel like this was not communicated well. I do do some communication and marketing stuff for a living, and when you think you've communicated well enough, keep communicating, because I didn't understand that this one was still in play. And I read this whole one. I skimmed through this one in the last 24 hours with a sick kid, and I'd like to have more time to go back and read the whole thing. And trust me, I'll give you pages and pages of notes. Like, you asked the other guy, I'd love to have three weeks to read it, time over Thanksgiving. But to me, I think it was miscommunicated, because I feel like you guys haven't been telling us this is going to go into the older one. That's why I was saying, this is being switched, because that was never explained. And I have recordings from their workshops and the community meeting. I didn't hear that. I didn't understand that. But that's why I brought those two front pages in, because I thought, maybe with all the lingo, something got lost in translation. I wasn't meaning to accuse anyone of anything, but I was like, this is not what we all agreed on. We had this wonderful short document, and this other thing gets sprung upon us, and we're all here going, what did you guys do? We were on the right track. So those are my comments.
Okay. Two things. You do have time.
Okay.
To get your comments in. The second thing is, this is a step process, so it will go back to Planning Commission eventually to review more stuff. And third, full disclosure, I was under the impression too, that that was our new document.
Well, and my issue with that is, okay, so if you guys vote for the green one, does that mean this one is automatically approved too, to be updated, to be a 2019 comp plan?
So, yes.
In a sense, that is the case, because it.
Because I feel like we're not reading it before we adopt it, which sounds like other political things that have caused problems. It also reminds me of Coeur d'Alene. Well, everything will be okay. We'll keep your two-hour free parking. You guys won't always be Commissioners.
Right.
You may agree to it, and then you may not be here in a couple of years. And I don't want to hold other, future Commissioners to what you guys have said, because it won't happen, and then we'll all be grumpy with each other. And so that's my other concern is, I really don't want this one passed at all. I agree with previous commenter, where it should just be this, and we can add this stuff in piecemeal instead of the other way around.
Okay. So the 16-page document is an update to the 2010 plan. The 2010 plan, and you know, I would invite David or Pat to opine here if they choose to, is, the 2010 plan is not eliminated. Now, I think Brent made a good suggestion, where he said, well, maybe we ought to go with the 16-page document and treat the 2010 as an appendix or an addendum of some sort, because it does contain a lot of statistical data.
Right.
Even though some of that probably needs to be updated, but that's beside the point.
And some of the wording contradicts some of the new wording, where I had noticed in our newer one, voluntary wildlife corridors, voluntary view sheds, which I was really happy about personally, there's some wording that contradicts that in the old one, where I was like, what? And the whole village thing was fought over. Those weird wordings of different zonings is still in there, and that's what brings up a lot of concern. So I would agree as an addendum, and that we can keep going through this, that it isn't all passed, and now it's going to be turned into code that we can keep. I want it to be an evolving document that we keep reexamining.
Mm-hmm.
So.
David, Pat?
Fair enough.
I, for one, am perfectly fine with the addendum appendix idea. It's just that the Plan Commission is the author of this document. I am really the spokesperson for the Plan Commission in that way.
Okay.
Yeah, to me, it'd be simply a matter of organization, you know, however the court seats fit to do it. You know, I don't think that would be a material change.
Understood.
In shape or form.
Okay, so that would not necessitate another public hearing? Okay.
Okay.
My only other comment was, coming from a web pager designer point of view, this is really easy to find, if you know where to look. This is six to eight menus down in your page. And to me, if I look at, if I find his name, or I find planning and zoning, this should be on the top, especially when there's a public hearing about it coming up in the next month. This is six to eight submenus down, and I searched in the bar, you don't get this one, and you go get that one in your search. So my comment would be, when it's something like this, it needs to be, even if it's temporarily moved up to where it's easier to get to, because not everyone has the time to go and look where it is. Because I got emails back with the long link, and I thought, I wasn't on Facebook. I wouldn't know where to look to find some of this stuff, which isn't necessarily the person's fault, but, you know, putting it not so many submenus down would be better.
Understood. Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Does anyone else wish to speak? No? Yeah, go right ahead. Come right forward. Need your name and address, please?
My name is Haika Yenat, 202 Regency Court, Coeur d'Alene, Idaho. And I do want to thank you that you're putting on this meeting at night, because a lot of people do work, and they cannot take off. So when I got this email, I was really, really thrilled that you guys are making this possible for working people to come. So what I did, and I had two hours off after work, I skimmed through both. I skimmed through the 16-page one, and then I found, out of some miracle, the 200-page one. And so I just walked in here, and sitting here, and I was listening to the other people here, and I really liked the idea of having the short one, and having the other one, the 200-page one, as an addendum. I think, you know, this is so awesome. When I first saw this, I thought, oh, this is all 16 pages. This is wonderful. Everybody can read this in one afternoon or one night. Why make it complicated for the everyday citizens? I mean, you guys are working for us, and I think you're doing an excellent job, but you've got to make it easy for us, because we have jobs, you know? And then, you know, have it in plain language, where, you know, even a person with a GED can understand it. And I'm not trying to put these people down. My son has a GED, and he is now making good money. So, but my point is, yeah, and then what I've also noticed, that you guys changed this promote open space and wildlife corridor to voluntarily. I just wish we would have taken out completely, but I think it's a first good step, because this is about private property, right? I mean, we're, you know, private property, I don't know. I kind of have to agree with what the first person said. You know, this is a little bit, this is too muddling to me. You know, I mean, if I, if I own, this is what I think, if somebody wants to dedicate their property to wildlife or open space, they will do it without us promoting it in a plan. I mean, people are so awake in today's world, you know, they want to preserve our environment, you know? And why do we have to state it in here over and over and over again? That kind of rubs me, you know, not in the right position. But other than that, yeah, I think you guys have done a great job, but it probably could be a little bit more enhanced. And so my next question is, can citizens just write you guys an email with comments?
Absolutely.
Yes.
To be more specific, because, and so just write to each of you guys in person?
Yeah, we'd send it basically to the KCBOCC, Cootney County.
Yeah.
Board of County Commissioners.
We can get you that address.
We'll get you the address.
Okay.
And this way, we'll all get it.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Anyone else wish to speak?
I have a question.
You want to come forward? Sure.
My name is Michael Burgess. I live in Post Falls, 2083 Northwest Wind Drive. So I noticed that there was a vote of four to three, if I understand it right, to bring this meeting about. Is there a record of those who were against doing it, and a position on, positions on why they didn't want to?
There is a record of the vote, yes. If they deliberated, that would be available? David?
You have the deliberations, but I was at the meeting, and there weren't statements as to why.
Okay. Just as an individual, doesn't have time for all the nuts and bolts, it's nice to see what some of those who are used to working with it, what they're saying, is kind of a starting place. So that's why I wanted to ask that question.
Okay.
And I would like to thank the gentleman in the blue for his statement. If I'd had time, that's what I would have talked about. So, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So I'm against the plan as it is because of that reason, in its present form.
You mean the 16-page? The current one, or the 2010?
The, as I understood it, both still had problems with the property rights.
Okay, so you're agreeing with the gentleman who spoke earlier?
Yes.
Who felt that the 2010 plan did a better job of protecting property rights?
I don't know that.
Okay, you don't? Oh, okay. I don't want to put words in your mouth. Okay.
I guess I didn't understand that he was saying the 2010 one was better. But I agreed with his perceptions of what was bad.
Okay, got it.
So, but I do like the idea of the 16-page. I agree with that.
Okay.
That idea. There might be some problems with some of the words on the property rights.
Okay.
I don't want to belabor that until I'm a little more educated on it.
Thank you.
Thanks. Feel free to give us written comments.
I will.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. So is there a motion, then, to close public testimony and potentially enter into deliberations?
Yes. I move that we close public testimony and enter into deliberations with potentially continuing deliberations to a date in the future.
So then, are you in favor of the continuance for the deliberations?
I think so. I think some of the issues raised this afternoon and tonight, I'd like to dig a little deeper into. I'm definitely in favor of the 16-page plus addendum. And so, yeah, and I have a couple of dates.
Okay, wonderful. So I would agree too, that we not deliberate this evening, that we continue and postpone a deliberation, so that we can take into account all the comments that have been received. And by the way, because this is a legislative hearing, you're free to continue submitting comments up until the time we actually do enter into deliberations, and we'll make that decision tonight as to when. And you can help us make that decision, by the way. And so, Leslie, you want to go ahead and offer a couple of options here?
So.
I'm sorry.
Right.
Do you want to, well, do you want to vote on the motion now, or do you want to vote after we've actually determined a time?
Close the hearing.
All right, we'll close the hearing.
Yeah, just close oral public testimony.
Okay.
Vote to continue to receive written comments.
I think we just need a second, right? Did I close?
Oh, you just need a second? Okay, then I do second, to close public hearing and continue deliberations.
Bill Brooks is excused. Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Philios?
Aye. So deliberations? Aye. So deliberations are continued to a date yet to be determined. Go right ahead, Leslie.
So I do have opening on the calendar for December 19th at 9:00 a.m., but I understand that, you know, people who work may want to come listen to deliberations. So the next available that we have is January 23rd at 6:00 p.m. So is that? Okay. Then we'll continue deliberations on January 23rd at 6:00 p.m.